We can start now.
Will you call the roll, please?
Danielle McKenzie.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Here.
Melissa Hunt. Louis Williams.
Here.
Adam Webb. Mark Cam.
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two is the consent docket. Item A, approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. B, receive and approve the minutes of the special budget study session held May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. C, receive the minutes of the regular planning commission held January tenth, twenty twenty-three. D, approve an addendum to the agreement with the Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality for funding on the new grapple truck. E, approve renewal of the inter-local agreement for FY twenty-three to twenty-four with the Board of County Commissioners for Cleveland County for grading, drainage, and hard surface of certain streets within the city. F, accept four variable width sanitary sewer easements from Tabor Homes to serve the Broadmoor Heights addition, section two, located in the southeast quarter of section five township ten north, range three west. G, accept four variable width waterline easements from Tabor Homes to serve the Broadmoor Heights addition, section two, located in the southeast quadrant of section twenty-five township ten north, range three west. H, accept two variable variable width sanitary sewer and drainage easements from Tabor Homes to serve the Broadmoor Heights addition, section two, located in the southeast quarter of section five township ten north, range three west. I, accept three variable width drainage easements from Tabor Homes to serve the Broadmoor Heights addition, section two, located in the southeast quadrant of section twenty-five township ten north, range three west. J, accept public water and sanitary sewer improvements to serve the more to come addition, section one being north of Northwest twenty-fourth Street and west of Janeway Avenue, application by Sean Payton. K, declare the following items from the Public Works and Public Utility Departments, more particularly described in exhibit A as surplus: clean tech parts washer, truck toolboxes, John Deere mower, a Toro motor, two Bobcat mowers, one nineteen ninety-one Ford F-seven-hundred-three-two-thousand-two F-two-fifties, and one two thousand five F-two-fifty. L, approve a memorandum agreement for FY twenty-three to twenty-four with the Oklahoma Water Resources Board and the U.S. Geological Survey for Stream Gouging and authorized payment in the amount of sixty-five hundred dollars. M, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY twenty-two and twenty-three in the amount of five million, five hundred and forty-four thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars and seventy-six cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Will you call for the roll, please? Our vote.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Cam.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes, item carries. Item three, consider approval of the FY two thousand, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four annual budget and adopt resolution fifty twenty-three.
Council members, this budget has budgeted sales tax of thirty-three million, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the general fund and is ninety-three percent of the projected fiscal year twenty-three total. The budgeted use tax is five million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and is ninety-two percent of the projected fiscal year twenty-three total. These are put in there just to be conservative with our budgeting for fiscal year twenty-four. Since the public hearing, the following expenditure has been added: fifty-two thousand, five hundred for a police department satellite office at Northwest, Northwest Twelfth and Janeway. I have not received any funding requests or any comments from the public since the public meeting or since the workshop. We've had the individual meetings. Recommend approval.
Do you have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We call for the vote, please.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Cam.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes, budget carries. Item four, consider approval of a contract with Crawford and Associates to prepare the city's annual financial statements for fiscal year ending in June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, and to provide the finance department with financial services on special products, projects on an as-needed basis.
Council members, you see the engagement letter in your group there. This is the same work Crawford's done for us for the last several years with the financial statements and various special projects as needed. We recommend approval.
Any discussion? Oh, do a second.
Second.
Please call for the vote.
Mark Cam.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes, item carries. Item five, consider the final plat for Cardinal Landing, section one, located in the northwest quarter of section thirty township ten north, range two west, being south of southeast nineteenth street and east of Bryant Avenue, application by IH Development LLC. Planning Commission recommended approval seven zero in Ward one.
Counsel, this subject site is located south of southeast nineteenth street and east of South Bryant Avenue. The property was zoned R-one as a planned unit development in twenty twenty-one with a preliminary plat of four hundred and ninety-two homes on one hundred and fifty-five acres. This is a density of about three point one-six living units per acre. The PUD approved large communal open spaces and recreational amenities but with narrow lots and smaller building setbacks in order to maximize lot coverage requirements. Public water is available along South Bryant Avenue and southeast nineteenth street, and sanitary sewer is available to the south and east of the site. Stormwater detention is required and is provided in common area B. FEMA floodplains and floodways are located along the southern boundary of the site. To meet the twenty twenty-one drainage criteria, all lots must be set back a minimum of twenty-five feet from the top of bank of the Southern Creek. Access to the final plat is provided by one entryway along South Bryant Avenue. The Envision More twenty forty plan calls for this location to be open space residential, and this includes new neighborhoods with smaller lots that feature significant open space, up to three lots per acre, and thirty percent open space. This application was reviewed as to its conformance with the plan. The overall development does preserve the natural drainage features of the property along with providing essential connections to the trail system, does provide thirty-five percent open space and a density of three point one-six lots per acre. The first phase of the development conforms with the PUD and preliminary plat and is in compliance with the comprehensive plan. Staff recommends approval of this application. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
So, in reality, what's the density by the time we take out all the common, common land? Is there any way to find that out? I've been asking that question for years now.
I would have to do some math, but I can.
Could we include that?
We can, yes.
When we do all this?
Mm-hmm.
Because three, a third of an acre per house sounds like a nice size lot, but in reality, that's not what they'll end up being because of all the open space area, because you use the whole one hundred and fifty-five acres as the divisor. It would be nice to be able to know what size these lots are going to be in reality.
I can certainly do that.
So I have a question, just to piggyback on that. On the comprehensive plan, was the intent to exclude the common space when we did that three, eight, three lots per acre?
No.
Or was it to say up to thirty percent open space, take that out, and then?
No, the, the intent of the comprehensive plan was to preserve the natural resources and still have the three lots per acre. So, what, what happens is you have large open spaces.
And it goes into the map?
And it goes into the map.
Which is well losing. Okay, that makes sense.
My idea is not to change the concept of the plan that we're doing. It's just, it's, I've asked this question over and over and over again, and I would like to know in reality, how large are the lots?
Sure.
I, I, I don't, I don't care to deviate from the plan and how you determine whether this satisfies the requirements or not. It's just.
Sure. Yes, I can do that moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion?
Make a motion to approve. Second.
We call for the vote, please.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Cam.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes, item carries. Item six is consider rezoning application number RZ ten thirty-one, located in the southwest quarter of section twenty-seven township ten north, range three west, being north of southwest thirty-fourth Street and east of Santa Fe Avenue from C-three general commercial use to C-three PU, permissive use, general commercial district with a permissive use for personal storage, and approve ordinance sixteen twenty-three, application by TWD Properties LLC. David Box, Planning Commission recommended approval seven zero, Ward three.
This property is located north of southwest thirty-fourth Street and east of Santa Fe Avenue. The site was zoned to C-three general commercial district in two thousand and two, and it is currently vacant. The applicant is proposing to develop the site with retail uses along the frontage roads, that's Santa Fe Avenue and southwest thirty-fourth Street, with a mini storage in the interior of the lot with, on the property abutting the Blue Stem Ridge addition. Although the zoning is in place for the retail development, a rezoning is necessary for the mini storage use, which requires a rezoning from C-three to a C-three with a permissive use for personal storage or mini storage. Public water and sewer are located along South Santa Fe Avenue. They will be required to be extended to serve the site. Stormwater detention is provided for the Oak Ridge addition north, Oak Ridge Crossing, excuse me, Oak Ridge Crossing North addition, including this site, by an existing detention pond that's located to the north of this subject site. The property is proposing to access a site through a shared drive that will access other retail buildings on the site, and access and maintenance agreements will be required for the shared access drive. The Envision More twenty forty plan calls for this location to be neighborhood commercial, and that includes uses such as office, retail, and service that are intended to serve the immediate area. This application was reviewed as to its conformance with the intent of the plan. Typically, mini storage uses are considered best located in heavier land use designations as they have a large footprint and don't significantly contribute to the sales tax or employment base in the area. However, in this case, the mini storage could be considered a secondary or auxiliary use to the planned retail development along South Santa Fe Avenue because of its poor location for retail use. In other words, the developer felt like there was no future for retail use on this site, but it would have some use as a mini storage. So due to these factors, in addition to the application's compliance with the intent of the plan, staff believes that an amendment to the plan is not necessary in this case. Permissive uses by definition are uses that may not be appropriate in all areas within the underlying zoning due to potentially undesirable characteristics. For mini storage facilities, the use may not negatively impact residential uses with increase in traffic or noise, but these uses typically require a lot of land area, but they do have limited economic benefits to the city. Therefore, care should be taken in allowing these uses in commercial areas to the exclusion of traditional retail and service industries. If the city council agrees that the applicant, that the subject site is not conducive to traditional retail development, and the land area dedicated to the mini storage use is sufficiently limited to preserve the integrity of the remaining commercial sites in this addition, staff recommends approval of this application. I should note that there is one letter of protest that is included in your packet from a property owner in the, I believe she was, lives in the Oak Ridge addition, and on page one fifty-nine of your packet, there is a layout of the larger commercial developments. You can see how all the uses work together. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
So will the, the mini storages be visible from either Santa Fe or thirty-fourth, or will they be hidden behind?
They will be behind commercial businesses. That's not to say that they won't be visible at all.
So it's not going to be one contiguous shopping center around? It'll be individual buildings?
It will be individual buildings.
What's the plan on when they, how they're going to, what order will they develop this in?
That is a great question for the applicant, and the applicant's representative is here.
Okay.
What, with regard to the PUD, because I do see where this backs right up to a row of homes. What is the developer, what are they having planned to help reduce, and I think I'm about to get the answer?
Sure, this is a permissive use, so it is, we don't have the ability to increase the amount of open space through the PUD process. However, if you look on page one fifty-nine of your packet, you'll see that the layout does include some green space that is located next to the Blue Stem Ridge addition. In doing plan review, we would be looking at that for some vegetation buffering such as evergreens, and then the units are not actually up against the property line. They are set back by a drive. But again, the applicant's representative is here, and she can help answer any questions.
There's a, there's a detention pond on the north end.
I do see that, but it's the east side. It's backed up right up, and I'm just curious as to what
Like fences or?
Their plan is to, so, yeah, if they want to come up and speak, I'd.
And I'm curious, it looks like Goddard Schools is on the northwest corner of that, if there's any kind of separation between that school and looking straight at those units.
Thank you, Lewis.
Good evening, Caitlin Turner, five-two-two Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant who's also here with me. So, since we're keeping it straight, C-three, we're going to have to meet or exceed all ordinance requirements, so it will be screened. There will be an hours of operation. Lighting will be dimmed and shielded from any residential uses. Also, with a use like this, it tends to be less traffic, so that is helpful to mitigate the heavy intensity of the rest of that retail development that's going to be along the hard corner. In terms of development, it will all hopefully start development around the same time, get it knocked out relatively quickly. Is that right?
Yes, and there's, to answer your question, there's site-proof fencing and landscaping, and this would pretty much act as a buffer between those homes and the real commercial stuff where they have people, you know, locking their cars and getting in and out, and in and out, and in and out. It, it really serves as a benign buffer for that.
What, if you don't mind, light dimming, because I understand you need to leave the lights on for safety and protection, but typically what we would do, that's a good, fair question, a lot of times we will put it on the fence and shine it away from the homes. Okay, thank you.
It does, it, yeah.
Say that we will do that.
It does need to be directional lighting, so that's for sure. So lots two A, two B, and three B, those are all commercial. Is that correct?
Right, yeah, that's all going to be developed, like retail, commercial.
Okay.
So what about those three little boxes in between what I believe are the storage units and those three that were just identified? Are those also retail of some sort?
But, it looks like storage as well.
Yes, we are not purchasing that portion. We are only doing the, the storage and then the retail that is right next to the school. But the, but the owners have agreed that all that other stuff can only be commercial. They're not going to come back to you and ask it for.
So you're purchasing lot two A and three A?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. And so then all of that stuff in the middle, the three little buildings, and that's not many storage, I think is.
It's not developed at all yet.
Yeah.
It's not developed at all, right, is it?
No, not right, yeah, right now.
No, it's all vacant at the moment.
This is, this is a baseball lot, so.
Yeah.
And so what, what will the hours be? Is it, is there access up for twenty-four hours?
There's a very, very small portion of people that might need in twenty-four hours, like a, like a drug rep or somebody that just is using it for their business, but it's, I promise you, it is extremely rare for somebody to be in there after nine o'clock in the evening.
And there, it's also gated right there, so any access to the actual storage buildings, there will be gates with a code or something that they have to implement. There's not going to be any kind of continuous, anyone can come in and out.
Okay, so will the interest, entrance to the mini storage be on the north end of two A?
So the, it'll take access off South Santa Fe, and then there's going to be two entrances to the actual units.
Yes, on the north side.
Yeah.
Is the entrance.
Okay. And then where, so if there's two ways they can get in, so that road that runs east and west, right there at the north end of two A, is there another avenue to get into the storage?
So you see on the, there, there's simply two ways in and out. Both of them are on the north and the south side of the retail portion.
Okay, I see the other gate. I see the other gate. I just didn't have it zoomed, I didn't have it zoomed in enough, sorry. Okay, so then those units there just to the east of two A are storage units there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Here's what I'm going to do, in all fairness, and I appreciate you all coming out, but I'm going to make a motion to table. The reason being is I'm going to vote no, and without everybody here, I don't know that that's enough to carry it, so I'm going to make a motion to table till we can get the rest of the council members here, and that way I think it would be more fair for you all. So if there's no objection, I'm going to make a motion to table this until the next meeting.
Are there any other concerns, or is it really just the residential piece?
It's the residential portion and the school.
The school. I was going to say, I also have concerns about the school being able to see that many storage, and I understand that it's a low-traffic area, but I would want to be sure that there's a site-proof fence, and when, I mean, more than six feet, I mean, what is it?
I have, yeah, and I have reservations about people going in and out all day with the school there, you know, being able, so I, you know, but that's where the reservation is for me.
I totally get it. Can I, can I address that?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so picture that if, if the whole thing was commercial, and you had a TJ Maxx and a Home Depot or whatever, and those, that would be completely open all the time, and people would be locking their doors constantly, day and night, all, you know, this is, this is a.
No, and I don't, I don't disagree with that, and I respect, and I do agree, I just, with the way the setup is here.
That one building that's right against the fence line, I'm struggling with that building.
Yeah, well, that one and then the one right up by the school, I, the same.
Well, but then we have, we also have, I don't know how many times I've called Brooks, but we have a traffic issue there during school time.
It's awful, sorry.
Perhaps we could bring, I, we have some traffic studies that show how less of an impact storage has, just in general.
Do you have those with you?
I don't right now, but I'd be happy to bring them or send them to you all, or Elizabeth ahead of time before the next council meeting, as well as maybe we can provide some renderings of the site-proof fencing that will be proposed.
And again, I.
I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, I'm just, I, because right now, and I, I don't want.
I, I get what you're saying, and I think that would be helpful to have that information, but I would point out, this is already zoned commercial. I know, I know you know, but if we were putting a TJ Maxx there, they wouldn't have to come to us. I know, I'm just saying.
And I agree, but, and I would still have, again, I would want to see what is being put in place to protect both the residents as well as the school, and I just, right now, I'm, I don't have a.
So the site-proof fence is, is not, I mean, what else would it be?
Yes.
But what else would it be, though?
Well, it's the lighting, and I know you said it's going to be directional on them.
Right.
If we agreed to put the fencing on, excuse me, the lighting on the fencing, shining it away from them, would that help you? Because, I mean.
If it, it could, but if it's shining away, you know, I don't know about reflecting how it's going to, I just, I, I want a little bit more information on it, and I'm, I'm not saying that it's going to stay a no. I'm just saying right now, based on the information that I have, so I do want more information.
And, and I would, just often, we don't get a lot of citizen input until after it's built.
Yeah.
And then they'll start calling, and they'll talk about the light pollution, and they'll, they'll talk, bring up other things that, and that's one of the reasons we want to be thorough here, so we can hopefully address most of the concerns that are going to come to us once they build. My only issue would just be the twenty-four, seven-hour access. If you don't anticipate that there would be a lot of your customers, maybe you could limit the hours from ten to six in the morning.
Percentage that, that wouldn't rent from us if we didn't provide twenty-four-hour access, and I mean, it's like, literally like two percent. And, and as far as the lighting goes, you guys, I mean, like if it was a Home Depot or a, any, any kind of commercial building, that people would just be able to drive up all day, night and day, and we wouldn't be here asking for your permission to do any lighting. I mean, it would just be those giant poles that are twenty feet in the air shining right down on them, and we wouldn't have to ask for permission for. I'm telling you, this is a really good buffer. It's not a.
Appreciate it, and I agree. Fortunately or unfortunately, this circumstance came before us, and so I've got an opportunity to explain my opinion on it, and that's what it is. Again.
Oh, sure.
Right now, I'm just, I'm, I'm just want to make, I'm going to make, I made a table motion because right now it would be a no, and, but this way, I want to get more information, and, and just get a little bit more information on it.
All, one last thing, again, since it's gated, I feel like that also is just going to be significantly less intense than anything that's already permitted by right. But with that being said, I think continuing this for, until the next city council hearing, if that's possible.
Yes, so for the record, that meeting will be on June nineteenth here at six thirty.
And in the interim, I'll provide Elizabeth with additional information, and hopefully we can come to a resolution.
Okay.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
I would second Jason's motion.
Motion and a second to table it. We call for the vote, please.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Cam.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes. Okay, item's tabled. Item seven, consider approval of two lot splits located in Oak Ridge Crossing North Edition, being north of southwest thirty-fourth Street and east of South Santa Fe Avenue, application by TWD Oklahoma Properties LLC, Tom Turner.
This is a companion item to your previous item, so if you.
Do we have a motion to table?
Make a motion to table.
Second.
Motion and a second. Will you call for the vote to table?
Mark Cam.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes, item's tabled. Okay, and the next meeting is June nineteenth.
Nineteenth, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, item eight, consider rezoning application number RZ ten thirty, located in the southeast quarter of section eleven, township ten north, range three west, being north of northeast twelfth Street and west of Flicker Ridge Road, from C-one Office District to R-one PUD, single-family dwelling district, as a planned unit development, and approve ordinance fifteen dash twenty-three, application by Mongold Properties LLC. Planning Commission recommended approval seven zero. This is in Ward two.
This site is located north of northeast twelfth Street and west of Flicker Ridge Road. The property is currently zoned C-one Office District and is undeveloped. The applicant is proposing to develop the property with a single-family neighborhood consisting of thirteen lots on two-point-six acres, and that results in an overall density of approximately five dwelling units per acre. The applicant is proposing a reduced minimum, minimum lot size of five thousand square feet versus a six thousand square feet that's required by city code, and a twenty-foot versus a twenty-five foot building line in the proposed cul-de-sac only. The, in order to accommodate the site standard variances, a planned unit development zoning is required. Water and sewer are available to serve the site. Stormwater detention for this development is required. There are no FEMA floodplains or floodways located on the site. Access is provided by Flicker Ridge Road, a collector road that feeds into northeast twelfth Street. Of the total thirteen lots, two lots will have direct access to Flicker Ridge Road, with the remaining lots accessing the proposed cul-de-sac street. The applicant is utilizing a PUD with the following amenities: approximately sixty-three hundred square foot of common area, and that does exclude the detention pond. Increased landscaping of fifteen trees in the common areas with trees of three-inch caliper, an automatic irrigation system for all the required landscaping, and residential exterior aesthetics with a minimum of sixty percent brick, rocker, stone. You might remember that this site was subject of an unsuccessful rezoning application in twenty sixteen for nine duplexes that would result in a density of approximately seven units per acre. That application was denied based on incompatible densities with the existing neighborhood. Since that time, the property has been for sale for commercial use, but it has had no interest. The current applicant purchased the property for single-family residential development that would be similar in nature with the surrounding neighborhood. The Envision More twenty forty plan calls for this location to be community commercial, and land uses allowed in the community commercial can include a mix of uses with up to fifty percent residential development. The proposed amenities and densities of five lots per acre do meet the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan, and no amendment is required. The subject property is located in an urbanized area of more with a mixture of land use densities and intensities in the general area. As I previously stated, this was a site of an unsuccessful rezoning application in twenty sixteen. Just to some comparisons between that application and this application, the request for that application was duplexes. This one is for single-family residential. That application had seven units per acre, while this one has five units per acre, and is very similar in density to the existing subject. And is very similar in density to the existing subdivision. Um, additionally, the housing type is, uh, very similar to the Foxfire Edition, uh, being mainly brick homes with two-car garages. Um, due to the compatibility of the proposed single-family development, uh, within the surrounding neighborhoods, staff does recommend approval of this application. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them. Um, the planning commission meeting, we did have some residents from the Foxfire Edition at the meeting. However, they did not speak in protest, they had more questions, and the developer met them outside. And it appears as if all their questions were answered.
Okay, and the twenty-foot lot line is on the front side from the cul-de-sac?
From the cul-de-sac only. We, we made them, um, adhere to the twenty-five foot along Flicker Ridge Road, so they would not be parking in the street.
And so the two houses on that, on Flicker Ridge, that's north of the other ones, that's the two that have access off of Flicker Ridge? Okay. I have, uh, haven't heard any, anything from any constituents in Ward two about it. Will they do any kind of fencing around the drainage, the retention pond at all? Since it's really not part of the neighborhood, but it's right there.
There's nothing in the P U D that describes any sort of fencing around the detention pond, generally...
This will be a dry?
It will be a dry detention pond, yeah.
Okay, just only in excess water conditions at home? I make a motion to approve?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, but a motion and a second. Will you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes, item carries. Okay, item ten, consider rezoning application R Z ten thirty-two, located in the southwest quarter of Section twenty-two. Township ten north, range three west, being north, oh, we, sorry, I skipped one. Okay, item nine. I don't do this, okay? Consider the preliminary plot of Flicker Ridge, uh, located in the southwest quarter of Section eleven. Township ten north, range three west, being north of northeast twelfth street and west of Flicker Ridge Road. Application by Mongold Properties. Recommended approval seven zero. The planning commission, it's Ward two.
This is a companion item, and I really don't have any additional information to add. I think we went over it in the rezoning.
Most, most to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Will you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes. Okay, item carries. Now we'll go to item ten. Uh, consider rezoning application R Z ten thirty-two, located in the southwest quarter of Section twenty-two. Township ten north, range three west, being north of Southwest Nineteenth Street and east of Eagle Drive. From A two to R two suburban agricultural district. Two-family dwelling units to R two, a P U D, two-family dwelling districts, as a planned unit development. And approve ordinance seventeen dash twenty-three, application by Omni Construction, planning commission recommended approval seven zero, and this is in Ward three.
Uh, this item and item number eleven are companion items on your agenda. Um, this site is located north of Southwest Nineteenth Street and east of Eagle Drive. The property is currently zoned A two and, and it is currently undeveloped. The applicant is proposing a duplex development consisting of ten lots and twenty living units, um, on three acres. That results in an overall density of approximately seven dwelling units per acre. The applicant is proposing a reduced lot width of sixty feet versus the seventy-five feet that's required by code. And a maximum lot coverage of fifty percent versus the forty percent that is, um, in city code. In order to accommodate these site standard variances, a P U D is required. Uh, water and sewer are available to serve the site, stormwater detention for this project is required. Uh, there are no FEMA flood planes or floodways located on the site. Access is provided by Eagle Drive, that is a collector street connecting to Southwest Nineteenth Street at a signal light. Uh, the applicant is utilizing a planning unit development, um, and the following amenities are provided. Um, approximately ninety-eight hundred square foot of common area, and that does exclude the detention pond. A total of thirty-five trees will be provided for the common areas. Uh, approximately two-hundred-square-foot pavilion and an eight-foot ADA picnic table and a six-foot bench will be provided in the common area. Automatic irrigation system will be required for all the landscaping. And residential exterior aesthetics with a minimum of seventy percent brick, rock, or stone. Uh, the envisioned more twenty forty plan calls this location to be urban residential, and this application was reviewed as to its conformance with the plan. And the, um, proposed development does include aesthetic and common area, open space amenities, uh, that meet the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. Because the applicant has, uh, applicant's development proposal does, um, have amenities and similar dens, densities to those found in the surrounding neighborhoods. Uh, staff recommends approval of this application and the companion, um, preliminary plat. Uh, there were no, there was no one at the planning commission meeting to speak, um, in opposition of this item. And my office has not received any phone calls.
This land's been vacant forever.
Yes.
And I've not received any either.
Yeah, me neither.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Will you call for the vote, please?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes, okay, item carries. Get back to my item. Okay, and then the companion item, uh, number eleven. Consider the preliminary plat of Eagle Lane duplexes located on the southwest quarter of Section twenty-two. Township ten north, range three west, being north of Southwest Nineteenth and east of Eagle Drive.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Please call for the vote.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes, item carries. Okay, item twelve, consider approval of a revocable permit and hold harmless agreement for the construction of a masonry fence within the South Broadway right-of-way adjacent to Mahogany Hills Edition, Section one. Located north of South Bryant Avenue and west of South Broadway.
Uh, this request is for a fence with brick columns, uh, to be located along the South Bryant, um, Avenue right-of-way at Mahogany Hills Edition. Um, this addition has, um, all of the normal utilities and the utility easement that is adjacent to the right-of-way. Um, but that does also have a Oklahoma gas gathering pipeline that is located in that utility easement. Um, because they have, uh, required setbacks from that gas line. Um, the applicant is requesting to place, um, the fencing, uh, about two feet within the Bryant Avenue right-of-way. Um, this does locate this, uh, fence very close to our twelve-inch water line. Um, I have, uh, coordinated with, um, Robert Pistol to ensure that he is, um, aware and has no objections of this application. And he does not, um, contingent upon this agreement being approved. This agreement does give the city the right to, um, require removal of the fence at any time for any reason. Um, typically, it will be for roadway widening project, um, that might happen in the future. But it also, it acts as a hold harmless agreement, um, in case the, um, twelve-inch water line does have an issue. Um, the fence would likely not make it. And so, we wanna make sure that we would not be held liable for any damage to the fence.
Okay, any discussion on that item?
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Will you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes, item carries. Number thirteen, consider approval of ordinance number ten thirty dash twenty-three. Amending Section seven dash two oh two of Part seven, Chapter two of the Moore Municipal Code by removing All American Waste from List of Vendors and adding Republic Services as examples of vendor, city manager does, or designate is authorized to approve payment of invoice, providing for repealer and providing for severability.
Council, while, uh, going through our codebook looking for updates, we noticed that this list of vendors, uh, that are used as an example of the vendors that the city manager is authorized to approve payment on. I noticed that All American Waste is no longer a vendor, and it's actually been replaced by Republic Services. Uh, we asked that this be approved. This is just updating the, the list and making it up to date, current.
Most to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Will you call for the vote, please?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes, item carries. Item fourteen, consider approval of ordinance number ten twenty-four dash twenty-three. Amending Part seven, Chapter two, Section seven dash two oh seven and Section seven dash two oh eight. The Moore Municipal Code by amending the minimum value property must be declared surplus by city council before being sold. And amending the minimum value of disposing of surplus property without the need for competitive bidding from five hundred to a thousand. Providing for repealer and providing for severability.
Council, this ordinance will require the minimum value of surplus property to be valued at a minimum of a thousand dollars before the need to dispose of this property by competitive bidding. Um, I checked with other nearby cities as well, and other cities have this thousand-dollar threshold as well. Uh, I came across this when I was looking at other surplus property, and there were some that were valued like, like a set of tires or something. And, uh, this would speed up with our ability to dispose of some of the surplus property.
So how do, how do they get rid of stuff that's gonna fall below that minimum?
It's under a thousand dollars, we would not need to go by competitive bidding. We would be able to...
But they would advertise somehow and just... I could go buy it.
That, that...
Okay.
Yes.
If it was a set of tires?
That would be correct.
Okay.
Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Will you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes, item carries. Okay, item fifteen, consider approval of ordinance number ten twenty-five dash twenty-three. Amending Part seven, Chapter five, Section seven dash five oh five of the Moore Municipal Code by amending the procedure for hotels and motels claiming tax exemption, providing for repealer and providing for severability.
Council, this is a much-needed update to our procedure in our hotels claiming a tax exemption. Um, one afternoon, I was visiting with our city clerk and noticed that the procedure that we had in our codebook is not what we are currently following. Um, so she provided me the information of what we do follow. Uh, it's exactly the same procedure that Oklahoma City uses, so I, I copied the Oklahoma City, uh, ordinance. And it's, uh, very similar to what we have here, and it is the procedure that we use currently. So this is just making it current to what we are actually doing today. Recommend approval.
Okay.
Approve.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Can you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes, item carries. Item sixteen, consider approval of ordinance number ten twenty-eight dash twenty-three. Amending Part ten, Chapter four, offenses against public peace of the Mu, Moore Municipal Code by adding Section ten four oh seven. Title lawful operation of unmanned aircraft systems, providing for punishment, um, for violations, providing for repealer, and providing for severability.
Council, this is a whole new section to Chapter four of Part ten of our code. Uh, this relates to unmanned aircraft or, uh, drones is what, is what I call it. Uh, we were approached by Major Belling about a need for the drone ordinance. And we used his help tremendously throughout the writing of this and his guidance and his expertise on the, on drones. So we were able to come up with this ordinance. This ordinance provides for rules on operating drones of different sizes. Provides for rules of conduct for the pilot and also rules prohibiting interfering with the pilot that is operating a drone. Um, I've asked Major Belling to be here in attendance to help answer any questions, 'cause he is the person that really knows all there is to know about drones. So if there's any questions, we'd be able to...
So is there any licensing required, depending on the size, or...
Well, if it is, uh, point five-five pounds or more, and you're flying it for anything other than recreational purposes, you have to have a Part one oh seven pilot certificate.
All right, very good.
And that's in the ordinance that's provided.
Yeah.
Yes.
Do we have, um, maybe like some kind of reminder to update this? 'Cause this seems like an area that is changing very, very quickly. And this, I've read it over, it seems like it's perfect for today, but that might change in the next two years.
They do, they do change.
Uh, uh, I mean, I know it's changing at like the federal level and that type of thing. It's something that's being talked about often, so...
Yes, I'm, I'm gonna be up on it, and I'm sure that you will also...
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. Any other discussion?
So you might ask if there's just questions out there.
Any other questions, discussion on the drone ordinance?
No, I, I, I looked it over and I, there's only one part that I would add, and that was. Human beings being located under a covered structure or inside a stationary vehicle. So if I'm out in the park and there's people over on this side, this side, and I'm flying over here, that's not gonna affect it then.
Correct.
So I don't see any problem. I think they did a great job.
Okay.
Awesome.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes, item carries. Okay, numbers, item seventeen, consider approval of ordinance number ten twenty-six dash twenty-three. Amending Part fifteen, Chapter five, Section fifteen dash five four, I'm sorry, five fourteen of the Moore Municipal Code. By amending the maximum fine of reckless driving from two hundred dollars to five hundred dollars, providing for repealer and pr, providing for severability.
Council, as part of the updates to the codebook, uh, we noticed that the maximum fine for reckless driving was up to two hundred dollars. While some of the less serious traffic offenses were up to five hundred dollars. This change would allow the fine for this offense to be increased to reflect the severity. We do recommend approving these changes, and I'm available for questions.
Does that have us in line with other communities around us?
Yes.
Okay, most to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes, item carries. Uh, item eighteen, consider approval of ordinance number ten twenty-nine twenty-three. Amending Part ten, Chapter five, Section ten dash five oh two of the Moore Municipal Code. By amending Section ten five oh two by adding the unlawful possession of other controlled dangerous substances in addition to marijuana, providing for penalties, providing for repealer, and providing for severability.
Council, state law has recently changed to allow simple possession of controlled dangerous substances other than marijuana to be prosecuted as misdemeanors. Upon approval, this ordinance would allow these types of crimes to be prosecuted in our municipal court. We do recommend approval of these changes, and I'm available for questions.
Okay, so reading this, and I can see the changes, um, are added and read. So what you're telling me is marijuana that's legally at this, it's legal at the state level with a card. We didn't have other controlled dangerous substances in our code, like heroin. So we're adding the other things. We're not adding marijuana to this.
That's correct.
I just wanna make sure that's very clear.
Yep, that's correct.
So previously, were those processed as, uh, some other type of offense other than misdemeanors?
Years ago, they were prosecuted as felonies for certain offenses. Marijuana, uh, second offense was a felony, and then things like methamphetamine, uh, fentanyl, cocaine, that kinda stuff was automatically prosecuted as felonies. Few years ago, it was, they were all reduced to misdemeanors if it's just simple possession. Now, things like drug trafficking, um, things like that are still felonies and prosecuted at the state level, but we do have the ability to prosecute them here as well.
Okay, very good. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Will you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes, item carries. Okay, item eighteen, consider approval of ordinance number ten twenty-nine dash twenty-three. Amending Part ten, Chapter five, Section ten five oh two of the Moore Municipal Code. By amending Section ten dash five oh two by adding the unlawful possession. Uh, I already did that one.
Yeah.
Danielle, I don't do this. Okay. Recess the city council meeting and reconvene the more public works authority meeting. Number nineteen is the consent docket. Item A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular more public works authority meeting held May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Item B, receive and approve the minutes of the special budget study session held May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Item C, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for F Y twenty-two, twenty-three in the amount of one million, two hundred and eighty thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars and eighty-five cents.
Most to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Will you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes, item carries. Item twenty, uh, consider approval of the F Y twenty-eight, twenty-three, twenty twenty-four annual budget and adopt resolution two sixty-four dash twenty-three.
Companion item to number three. Recommend approval.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Will you call for the vote, please?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes, item carries. Recess the public works authority meeting and convene the more risk management meeting. Item twenty-one is the consent docket. Item A can accept the minutes of the regular more risk management meeting held May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. B, receive and approve the minutes of the special budget study session held May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Item C, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for F Y twenty-two, twenty-three in the amount of three hundred and seventy-three thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars and forty-eight cents.
Make a motion that we approve the consent docket. Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Please call for the vote.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes, item carries. Recess the more risk management meeting and reconvene the city council meeting. New business, item A, citizens forum for items not on the agenda. Um, I have two that are signed up. First is Mr. Patrice Williams. If you'd come up and state your name for the record and your address, and then you'll have five minutes.
Patrice Williams, ten sixty-one Northwest Sixth Street. And I first wanna start off, I looked back at the video. And I first want to start off, I looked back at the video of the last city council meeting, and I came across a very defensive right off the bat, and I want to apologize, because it was not my intention, I was just trying to understand.
Well, thank you.
But what I do want to talk about is being accused of rumors by a city councilman, and then having my time cut short and not being able to talk about those rumors I'm accused of. That really bothered me, and that should not happen. I'm willing any time to sit down with city council members and with someone else there and discuss the rumors, because I don't know of any I did. But the way that whole thing was handled last time was very demeaning and on the verge of defaming my character in front of all of the City of Moore, and that really bothers me. So that's all I have to say.
I will respond on behalf of the city council, even though I was present.
Right.
And I'll open it if anyone else would like to say anything. I think emotions were high, and I would apologize on behalf of those people, knowing them and knowing their character, they are good people, but I do think emotions were high that night.
They were.
And I will relay that information, I'm sure Brooks will as well.
They were.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, next, Mr. Jones, if you'd like to come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and then you'll have five minutes, sir.
Hi, I'm Alah Jehovah Jones, three three zero, three three zero eight southeast, Eighty-Ninth Street, Oklahoma City. First, that just pissed me off. Was somebody bothering, somebody, a lady? Not cool. Like, that's what I mean. That's the dilemma I keep having, I notice, with the Jesus followers, where they don't have the respect that they should have. Now, I'm here because your officers owe me ten grand per disrespectful officers, four of them, you do the math. And I want to point out more than anything, I was definitely mad at you, because you came at me, and I didn't know you were a cop. Like, how does that sound? Like, I stated my name and address as you guys asked, but then you make me not know you? Not cool. That's exactly what I expected of you guys. Like, you get to lie to the suspects, but I'm not a suspect. But I guess my skin makes me a suspect, right? But I know, Trump taught you guys, hey, they're playing the race card, even though that's exactly what you're doing. Like, that was a pathetic showing. If you was one of them, you should have kept it real with me. I would have respected you more. As for the rest, like I said, I'm not gonna stop with the officers. I expected the cheerleader Johnson to be here, but I see he's not. I'm not gonna ever stop with them, because there's no way on God's green earth that I'm gonna allow officers to disrespect someone from my family and get away with it. It's just that simple. I'm not gonna reiterate the story of what happened. I don't care about Mitchell and what he decided, because the reality is, I asked him once, but he couldn't do it when the black guy asked, but of course, when you guys asked, oh, I did. But of course, I get the job I got whenever I asked the first time. In case you guys ain't noticed, this really don't bother me, and I do have one last thing to say. I finally got you. If you want, you're their leader, you can go anytime, because I'm that serious about your officer bothering my kid. And another thing, the officer, when he pulled me to the back, it was because I was walking in today, and I almost dropped him, because he knows I don't like them. Hey, Mr. Jones. And I didn't say anything. I just left it alone, just kept walking. I knew just the hi was agitating, but then I hear him, well, um, hi, you know, that stupid talk. But you guys say they have respect. You guys don't believe what I'm saying about their disrespectful nature, and it happens right in your building. But I'm the liar. I guess my skin and the fact that I don't like make-believe Jesus makes me all different. I hear you guys, oh, we're worried about this, or we're worried about some whatever, something where they're trying to do something for the community, we need storage. Why aren't you, I'm worried when I see churches next to my house, those are the guys taking the kids and messing with them. But we're not talking about that. We're constantly worried about everybody else, that the poor people can never have anything for themselves. Like, that's what I mean. I'm sitting here, and I'm looking like, these are the people that are supposed to be judging my situation? You're worried about, oh, well, I'm worried about lighting, but we got in the community, in Cleveland County, we got dudes like taking the kids from your Jesus thing. I didn't hear one time we worried about that. Actual crime. We're talking about supposed crime compared to actual. Like, y'all definitely made me not respect you, because it come across like he's running the show. I didn't like that he could just house everybody in the hood. You say house like, how do I put it? Like, that's a term, like, he basically punked everybody. He took over the speech, and y'all could hear I don't like cops. What the hell made you think I wanted to talk to one? Like I said, I'm gonna continue acting like this until you guys meet my demands, or those cops of yours get out in the middle of the road, because there's no way I'm gonna let go that they bothered my child. Your cops were disrespectful as hell at the hospital.
Ten seconds left.
And then on top of that, they lied. On camera, they said, Mr. Jones, you could follow us, but then they didn't. They played some little scheme with cheerleader Johnson. That's all I got.
Okay, I don't have anyone else signed up to speak. Is there anyone who would like to speak?
I see you.
Come on. Please state your name and address for the record.
Okay, Linda Espinoza Ross, seven oh five Penn Lane, seven three one six zero. Well, first things first, I just had a general question, so I don't have to hunt your beautiful city clerk down. It says on our little agenda thingy, page like twenty-two hundred and sixteen, in Spanish, it's called, like, whatever, you know? You know, when you're looking at your stuff? Where's all those pages?
So we get a ginormous book.
Yeah, your little, your book.
So...
I want to see your book. Can I see it sometime?
If you have any questions about any of the items, I know that we can provide the backup information before or after the meeting.
Some of that information is not for public consumption.
Oh, that's, I was trying to hunt it down. Why? Can I know why?
Well, when it deals with people's employment, and how much they make, and all that kind of stuff, that's not public...
That's fair. Yeah. Okay.
Some of the other things, like plat maps, where Elizabeth was talking about, the cul-de-sac that they were going to develop the two-point-six acres, that type of thing, I do know, but yeah, as Louis mentioned, some isn't releasable, but it is quite a big, mine's digital, which is why I keep losing my place, but yes...
I know, I can see that. No, there was like page like three hundred and fifty-seven, I'm like, and you guys read that like every month? Like...
Every two weeks.
Every two weeks? Oh goodness, I would not want to be, I mean, I do want to be you to an extent, but it's kind of like when you do...
No, you don't.
No, I don't.
Well, do you live in Word One?
After your spicy citizens, no, I don't. Well, after that fun share, I was just saying, like, with tensions between public officials and, and yes, housing, it means you're like tabling it, that's, that is a term. It's like, it means you're tabling it, that people can, so when an individual can house somebody, you're able to share freely, you able, you are able to share freely, and then the house of the house person master are able to just shut it down, and then all conversation ceases. So that was kind of what he was trying to get at. But yeah, what is kind of our way, let me ask, what is our way to handle disgruntled citizens with police officers, especially with tension being so high? Obviously. I was just wondering. Like, because I know we did like the cop with coffee thing that I missed, and other things like that.
So we actually haven't had a huge issue. I think this is a very individualized issue that's being addressed. As far as, I have not had people reach out to me. I've been on city council for about seven years, and I think most, half of everyone up here has been on longer than I have. I think Louis is about the same time I am, but it's not something that I hear often, but there is a lot of working together with the schools, with the parks. I don't know if anyone else wants to speak on that?
I don't know. I was just wondering, after that, you know, if there's one, there's thirty, you know, just things like that.
Well, I mean, it would be a standard protocol. If you've had an issue with a particular officer, then you would talk to someone in the police staff to see if there's an issue that needs to be addressed. If we can't resolve it that way, then it comes into the staff inside. So Brooks would be the primary person that would address it, and we would just evaluate it and see what needs to be done.
But still within the police force, though?
Well...
Brooks is not within the police force.
No, Brooks is not. Brooks is the city manager, and so he has oversight of the police and of the fire.
And to be clear, on city council, we do not have oversight of the police department.
I was gonna say, like, we're going, we're going the wrong channels, and I was like, that's a good question.
So we're not, we're not necessarily going the wrong channels. Here, we make sure...
Oh, no, he was going the wrong channel.
No, and that's not what I'm saying. I'm just saying that we make sure it gets addressed by reaching back to Brooks, that type of thing, but we don't have oversight. The only person we have oversight of is Brooks, so to make that really awkward, but that's the power that we have as city council. There are, I mean, there's several of us usually, but...
I'll be, oh, I don't want to be Brooks. Oh, okay. No, that, the last two shares are making me, because you know, obviously, I understand people, like emotions running high, and people are so passionate about things going on in our city, I'm just worried about the certain channels to go through, so people do feel hurt, so we're not just like yelling into the void of our concerns, if that makes sense.
That makes sense, and I'll say city council elections will be in the next year, so if anyone's interested, you are welcome to run against one of us.
Oh, no, I'm tired right now, but you can have that right now. Okay, that was my only questions, I was like, I want the book, I want to see the book, but okay, no book for me, but is my, I have my five minutes up. That's why I don't keep...
No, you're good.
All right, thank you.
Used to, we had a copy of this that was always...
Oh my gosh, of the book?
The book is huge.
That's too, that's too weak.
Two weeks.
Maybe we start doing that again, so if people want to come look at it, not for them to take, but if they want to come look at it, they can do that.
Well, they can at least make their request known.
Sure, sure. Any questions you have, I'm happy to provide the backup documentation.
Oh, so wait, you have to, do you read the book first?
Yeah, I'm...
And then you give them the book? Who reads?
I help put it together.
Everyone submits their information. Usually Vanessa, don't you compile the book?
It's the department heads that submit the items, and it's a, it's a team of people that get the...
Yeah. Oh goodness. Okay, so then y'all make the book, and then you give it to Brooks, and then he reads the book, and then he gives the book? Or you give the books to everybody?
The city attorney gets, I mean, it depends on the items. I mean, it's just a process, and then once it's all complete, then Brooks signs off on it.
Oh, ooh, I really don't know. Sorry. All right, all right, well, that was all my question. I'm trying to be good about like asking a question every, every meeting and just bother y'all, rather than me having y'all.
Call one of the council members, and we'll be glad to talk with you over the phone and answer all your questions, and those we can, our city manager will answer them.
And you can always call my office, too.
Oh, I'll send an email. Most of us, well, none of us do this. Y'all have like day jobs.
I was gonna say, none of us do this full-time.
You gotta keep in mind, we all have day jobs.
No, no, I gotta...
Email is great, though. I try to turn email within twenty-four hours during the evenings or something, so that's, yeah, that's always...
That's exciting. Okay, well, that was all like, I don't have a bell, so I'm done.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, sure.
Sure.
Yeah, go ahead.
I feel like he kind of brought me into that before he started talking.
I didn't need to.
Not you?
No, I don't think it was.
But when I have an interaction with somebody that I don't like, when we get it solved, it's over. I don't hold, there's, it's over. You know, yeah, I've had a run-in with a police officer, it's over. That doesn't mean I hate all police, you know? I'm a huge backer of the police department, and I don't think y'all are doing anything wrong. So don't, don't put me, don't let him put y'all. I'm not...
I appreciate that.
Not in that.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Okay, anyone else? Okay, item B, items from the city council trustees. I only have one thing. I know the station's been super busy lately, and they've had this great situation where it rains, and then it doesn't rain, and then it doesn't, it rains again, so they've handled it very well. I know that, I mentioned it at the very beginning of the meeting before we were waiting on one council member. No, I didn't, I mentioned it to Brooks.
It was eastern.
It's always eastern, that there were some hurricane rains, and it actually took out part of the station that, everything was over, but Sue and her team were out there. Actually, Sue was even out there, and she, there were mops. Anyway, they do a great job making sure that happened, and that, that gets executed flawlessly, because I know it's been a mess lately, so good job. Okay, item C, items from the city trust manager.
Just one thing, I attended the ODOT public meeting last Thursday regarding them taking Highway thirty-seven off of their network and giving it to the city. I was the only person in attendance there. That'll be presented to the commissioners at a future date, and the recommendation will be, once the underpass project is completed, to deed Highway thirty-seven to the city.
Okay. Okay, item twenty-three is executive session. Section three oh seven, title twenty-five, Oklahoma statute permits the public body, public body to meet an executive session for certain specified reason under certain specified conditions. It's the opinion of the city attorney that the city council may consider and adopt a motion to meet an executive session to discuss the following items. Item A, discuss and consider and if deemed appropriate, consider taking possible action regarding pending case number CJ dash twenty twenty-three dash four sixty-seven filed in Cleveland County District Court by Abel Law Firm on behalf of Jane Thompson against the city of Moore and authorization for legal counsel and staff to take action as necessary and appropriate in the interest of the city of Moore as authorized by twenty-five Oklahoma statute three oh seven B dash four. Item B, consider, discuss and consider and if deemed appropriate, consider taking possible action regarding pending case number CJ dash twenty twenty-three dash three six one filed in Cleveland County District Court by Griffin Reynolds and Associates on behalf of Kimberly Gilliland against the city of Moore. An authorization for legal counsel and staff to take action as necessary and appropriate in the interest of the city of Moore as authorized by twenty-five Oklahoma statute three oh seven B dash four. Item C, dis- discuss, consider and if deemed appropriate, consider taking possible action regarding pending case CJ twenty twenty-three dash five eighty filed in Cleveland County District Court by Winters and King Incorporated on behalf of COP Hometown Service, Inc. Formerly Airco Services against the city of Moore and authorization for legal counsel and staff to take action as necessary and appropriate in the interest of the city of Moore as authorized by twenty-five Oklahoma statute three oh seven B dash four. Item D, consider, discuss and consider taking action concerning the city manager's evaluation and employment benefits as authorized by twenty-five Oklahoma statute three oh seven B dash one. Item E, convene to executive session. Do you have a motion?
Make a motion. We convened the executive session.
Second.
Okay, a motion and second. We call for the vote, please.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Cam?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes. Okay, we are convened to executive session.
I have to get back there. Okay, item F reconvene from executive session. Let the record reflect that everyone who was present is present for this. Do I have a motion on item A?
Make motion to, for staff to proceed as directed.
Second.
Motion and second, will you call for the vote please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes, item carries. Item B, do I have a motion?
Make a motion for staff to proceed as directed.
Second.
Motion and second, will you call for the vote please?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes, item carries. Item C, do I have a motion?
Make a motion for staff to proceed as directed.
Second.
Motion and second, will you call for the vote please?
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes, item carries. And then item D, do I have a motion?
Make a motion for staff to proceed as directed.
Second.
Motion and second, can you call for the vote please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes, item carries and item, I'm sorry, and then item 24 is adjourned.
Don't move, second.
Motion and second, will you call for the vote please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes, we are adjourned.